I want to appreciate all of you for joining us today. The World Cup is going on and an African team is playing, I'm sure you have the chance to maybe watch it again, but you're here with us, I want to appreciate each and every one of you who has joined us today. So this will be the last session on remote work, it's the third session and we will concentrate mainly on how to avoid burnout when working remotely. So we started this workshop series two months ago and we had one session, the first session was an introduction to what remote work is. And we say that remote work is a style of work that allows workers to work away from the traditional office space. This can be at home, they can work from a shared space, shared office space, or a co-working space, or even a cyber cafe, as long as they have the tools to accomplish the work that they have been given. So the benefits of working remotely we established in our first session is that it gives employees a flexible style of work. You don't have to check in into an office at a certain time and leave at a certain time. So when we're working remotely, you are flexible, you can work from anywhere, you can take work with you and do it as long as you have the tools, you understand the task that's required of you and you can do the work from anywhere. Another benefit is their lifestyle. Remote workers live a better lifestyle because they're able to manage their time well and allocate time to personal and personal and family issues. So you can decide as a remote worker to wake up early, get some work done so that when the kids are up, you can spend some time with them before they go to school. That's one of the benefits of working remotely. And the benefits to companies and employers is that remote work expands their pool of candidates. They don't have to hire locals, they can hire global. And the global talent is diverse. It improves company culture and these are the benefits that companies experience when they, when they hire remote talent. We also talked about what's required to successfully work remotely, which is strong internet connectivity connectivity. And the companies should, the company and the employees should take up their choice of working remotely. They should willingly take up this option, they shouldn't be forced. They shouldn't be forced to, to adopt to this form of working. So, and we also shared some of the popular remote jobs that some of the jobs that can be done remotely, which is one as a software engineer, as a social media manager, as an accountant, as even as a tutor, as a teacher where you provide classes to foreigners. So that's briefly about the first session. Then we went ahead to our second session, which was on identifying remote work opportunities. After the introduction of what remote work is, the next step is to identify where to find these jobs. So we came up with four key channels to find, to apply, to find and apply for remote work opportunities. One was LinkedIn and we say that with LinkedIn you use the Jobs tab and search accordingly. Modify the search to say you're looking for remote jobs and the job that are available in allocation will be listed to you. Then we also had job sites and this include indeed WeWorkRemotely, remote.co and FlexJobs. With these sites, you modify your search and specify the type of job you're looking for, the profession you are in and the and specify that you are interested in a remote job, then you find and apply for the jobs that are presented to you. We also had a target company websites. So if there's a company that you are hiring, that you want to work for remotely, you follow that company, sign up for their newsletters so that when an opportunity arises, they will send that opportunity to your email through the newsletter. And lastly, we had social media. So where are you, by following the companies, following the account that share remote work opportunities, you'll be able to find and apply for the jobs that you want. And after that, we talked about the interview process. How, so you found these jobs, you've applied and let's say you have this short list and you head over to to, uh, to an interview. And with this interview, how do you approach? How do you approach yourself? How do you conduct yourself to increase your chances of landing the role? So with this, you say you need to treat this interview like a like an in-person one. So you need to dress well, make sure at least the top part is, you are dressing nicely, the upper shirt, maybe a coat, even a tie. You also need to ensure that there are no distractions around you. So if your phone, put it off. And also notifications on your computer and just turn them off, you don't want anything to distract you. You also need to choose a neutral background, a background that shows you are a professional and it's not messy. Lastly, on how to conduct the interview is you need to stay engaged, not when the interviewers are, are, are talking to show that you've understood what's being said and also ask questions if you need any clarification. So those are the two sessions that we had. So we are going over to our third session, which is on how to avoid burnout when working remotely. So you'll allow me after that recap, allow me to share my screen for today's session. I hope you can all see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So this is our third session and it's on how to avoid burnout when working remotely, which feeds into the topic of how to have a successful remote work experience. So after doing the interview, the next step is to perform this work that you've been assigned. How do you have a successful remote work experience, experience, especially as an intern and to increase your chances of landing this role on a permanent basis? So these are the things that we'll cover today. We'll cover how to have a successful how to have a successful remote work experience, how the tools that you need to perform your remote job effectively and dealing with communication breakdown when working remotely. It will happen because you're not in the same space, you're not in the same room, in the same office, communications breakdown will happen. How do you deal with them? Because if you don't handle your communications properly, you may not be able to perform your tasks as required and you may feel overwhelmed and not satisfied with your remote jobs. We also take a look at how to leave a lasting impression to secure a full-time remote contract. So as an, as an intern, you have a short-term contract, but you want that contract transformed into a full-time one. How do you go about that? We'll share that in this, in this session. And lastly, we'll take a look at how to avoid burnout when you're working remotely to, to ensure that you can still meet your obligations, you can still perform the tasks that have been assigned to you as required. So this session will be a very interactive one and I'll invite you midway along the presentation to just contribute and share your experiences on certain issues that I'll, I'll, I'll mention. So to start, after passing the interview, you are now ready to start your remote job. Success in your new role will depend on how well you deliver the tasks that have been assigned to you. Success in your new role also depends on how you relate with your colleagues, with your coworkers and with your manager. Remember that remote workers are distributed and you need the hiring manager or the, the company that you're working for to feel that you are contributing something constructive to the organization so that at least they can promote you, give you a full-time role and even give you a raise. So success in your role, in your new role will depend on how you manage yourself, how you engage colleagues, how you perform the tasks that have been assigned to you. Also, remote workers face unique challenges such as distractions and burnout that affect performance. This happens. Even those who work in office, they experience burnout, they get distracted, sometimes they're not able to meet their work obligations because of personal and family issues. A remote worker will still experience them and we'll talk about how to deal with these challenges to ensure you are able to deliver on your role. Overcoming these challenges will help you succeed as a remote worker. Okay, so let's proceed and we are going straight into our first mini quiz. And please feel free to use the chat to share your, your answers. So the quiz is what are the qualities of a successful remote work employee? So let's say you're working remotely, picture someone working remotely if you've not done it yourself. What are the qualities that this worker needs to have for them to succeed in their role? What are the things they need to do right? How should they carry themselves for them to say they have succeeded in whatever they're doing? So what are the qualities of a successful remote work employees? Remember, there's no wrong answer, there's no right or wrong answer. We are all here to learn and we learn by exchanging ideas. So if you just use the chat and I will take a look at, I'll go through them shortly before proceeding to the to the next slide. So please, if you have something to share, use the chat and we'll discuss on these qualities before we proceed. Anyone with something to share? Okay, yes, I can see the comments are coming in. Thank you so much. So Ruth Maura says a high degree of reliability. That's nice. Yes, remote workers need to be reliable. They need to ensure that if they're given a task, they can believe on that. Thank you so much, Ruth. Gracia says self-driven. Yes. Remote workers should be self-driven. Remember, you don't have a boss to tell you what to do to ensure you are delivering on your task. So you need to be able to push yourself to meet your work obligations. And Ruth also says a strong work ethic, which is very important. As a remote worker, as I said, you need to give you need to give the, the, the company a reason to keep you longer. Remember, you are, you are, you are, you are remote talent. They still have the option of getting someone local and so that they can oversee what they are doing. So you need to show them that even when I'm not in the office, I still deliver on what's asked of me. So a strong work ethic is a very, very nice character of our remote work employee. And Edina says having the ability to get things done without being pushed or asked to do so. Thank you so much, Edina. This is exactly what remote work is all about. You should be able to do the works that have been assigned to you. No one should you, you need to manage your time well, you need to set deadlines for yourself and, and act on them. Prince says meeting deadlines. Yes, a remote worker should be able to meet the deadlines because that's how you show you're effective to the company that has hired you. Thank you so much, Prince. And Ruth says exceptional communication skills, very important because remote, when you're working remotely, you need to find ways to communicate with other workers, communicate with the manager. So you need exceptional communication skills. You should, you should be able to reach out to your colleagues if you need help, you should be able to explain yourself. If you're not able to meet a deadline, make sure you reach out early enough to to avoid any confusion. Annette says having confidence in every activity, very important. You need to be confident because the task that will be assigned to you, sometimes they may be difficult and you don't have someone to call, to, to, to chat with close to you. So confidence is important. Edina says good communication, self-motivation and responsibility. All those are correct answers. Thank you so much for your participation. So allow me to, to proceed. So thank you so much. All your answers are correct. Okay, so the qualities, the qualities of a successful remote work of a successful remote work employee, one is communication. You've already said excellent communication skills are required. I believe that was Ruth. So anyone who works remotely must be effective at staying in touch with their colleagues through email, instant messaging and video chat. You need to make sure you are chatting with your colleagues, your manager and sharing progress and updates if there's a task that you're working on. A remote worker should also be collaborative. On top of being a strong communicator, a remote employee needs to do work that builds on the efforts of their colleagues. They need to know what their teammates are working on and what they can do to complement it. This is how you position yourself to secure a full-time role if you are if you are less than on an internship and you want to make, turn that into a full-time role, you need to be collaborative. Find what others are doing, see how you can complement it. That's how you show your value. Should also be an independent worker. While collaboration is important, remote workers need to be comfortable working on their own day after day. You should be able, when you're given a task, you should be able to sit, do research and find how that job is supposed to be done. Only, don't reach out very too much because people will start saying, are you even qualified for this job? So find a way to deliver on the task that I've been assigning to you independently and only reach out when it's, it's urgent and you really need someone's help. So at a self-starter is another quality of a successful remote work employee. I can equate this to self-driven. So when you're, when, when you're working from home, you need to be motivated and productive for the entire duration of your workday. Remember, you are in charge of setting times for yourself when you're working remotely. Most of the times, you'll just be assigned a task and you'll be told, I need this, this task completed in let's say two, 48 hours. You need to be able to motivate yourself to stay productive and deliver on the works that are waiting for you. So even if you don't have a boss looking over your shoulder, you still need to accomplish everything that is expected of you. We also have focus. It is easy to get distracted in a traditional in a traditional workspace because they, they, it's easy to stay motivated in, in the traditional workspace because the only thing you're there to do is to work. But when you are, you are alone at home or in your, in your co-working space, you can easily get distracted with by the TV with your phone and you'll find that you are not even finishing on the task that I've been assigned to you. So you need to be able to stay motivated. No one is there to keep you focused and motivated in your work. You have to do it by yourself. Then there's time management. One of the perks of working from home is you get to set your own schedule. However, this means you need to properly manage your time and be available when you need to collaborate with others. Manage your time, set the times when you'll be working, you need to set times when you'll be resting, you need to set time for breaks. This is how you ensure you, your productivity stays consistent as you're working remotely. We also have tech savvy. Remote work is now common because technological advancement have made it, have made it possible for people to stay connected. It's crucial that remote workers know how to use the right solutions or can pick them up quickly. When you work remotely, you'll definitely be depending on technology to stay connected and to collaborate with your colleagues. So you should be able to use these tools. This is not the time to say, I don't know how to use, to, to, to use PowerPoint, I don't know how to use Zoom. You'll miss out on a job because you don't know how to use some of these tech tools. So if, if there's something that's a tool maybe you haven't experienced for, you haven't worked with it, you need to be able to pick up how to use it very quickly. You also need to be resourceful. Remote employees don't have access to all the amenities of an office. You need to figure out how to do your job in your own environment while solving any problems you encounter on your own. You are on your own when you're working remotely, you are at home. When something happens, when a challenge arises, it's not the time, you shouldn't just start raising issues with, to your boss and complaining that you're not able to do something. You need to find how to solve it. Because one, you are not in an office environment where you can get help from maybe someone in the office. You need to find ways to solve the issues that you face. You also need to be passionate about the organization that you are working for, passionate to help them meet their objectives. If not, you will not succeed and the organization will let you go first, you are remote. And if you're not passionate about that organization, they won't have any reason to keep you longer. So those are the qualities of a successful remote work employee is if you want to succeed remotely, these are the things that you need to build. The skills and the capabilities you need to succeed as a remote worker. Next, you're going to look at the tools, are the tools that you need to perform your remote job effectively. The best tools to crush it, to crush at remote work. So as remote work grows in popularity, the need for remote work tools becomes more apparent, apparent. So how can you, as a remote worker, how can you maintain communication with your colleagues, manage projects effectively and share work quickly when working remotely? You'll do this through remote work tools. As a remote worker, you'll always be working with tools to stay connected, to collaborate, to manage the project, to manage the project you're working for. And you do this with remote work tools. So we'll jump straight into our next quiz. So which tools do you think remote workers need to perform their job effectively? If you've worked remotely somehow, which tools did you use to connect with, with other people you are collaborating with? Please use the chat to share your answers and I'll go through them in a while before moving on to the next part of the slide. So which tools do remote workers need to perform their jobs? Just imagine you are, you are a remote employee, what will you need to communicate with your manager, what will you need to collaborate with a colleague, what will you need to manage the work that you are, you are working on? So please, let's see what you, what you have to, to say about that. Use the chat, please. Prince says Microsoft Teams, wonderful. You need Microsoft, Microsoft to connect virtually with your colleagues. Josiah says internet wifi or yeah wifi or bundles. Yes, these tools are connected to you need wifi to be able to access them. So you need internet to be able to connect with to connect to these tools. And Ruth says laptop or a desktop. Yes, you'll need a laptop because these tools run on, on, on a PC or a, or a, or a laptop. Yeah, so you need a laptop. A desktop, she also says Zoom, Slack, Google Chat, nice. For communication, I guess, yeah, Zoom for communications. We also have Margaret is saying Slack, Google Meet, Google Calendar, wonderful. I especially love that you have Google Calendar, that means you know how to plan yourself. And Edina says Edina says Trello, yeah, Trello is a project management tool that you need to be able to do your work well, to plan your, 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 your jobs. Gracia says a conducive environment, very important to perform effectively, the environment you're working from should be effective. Annette says cloud storage, Google and calendar, nice. Cloud storage to store files, to store images and to share, to protect them from getting lost. Clement says Clementine, sorry, says Zoom. And Philimin says internet connection. Thank you. Those are amazing answers. And I can say you, 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 you have an idea of how to succeed remotely. Allow me to proceed kindly. Okay, so first and foremost, you need two things to succeed as a remote worker. The tools you need is reliable internet access. You also need desktop, desktop PC or a laptop. The internet allows you to connect to the tools, which can be communicative, communication, collaborative and project management tools. And the internet that you need for remote work advice, you need to get a fixed wireless connection because internet bundles or I don't know how you call them elsewhere. They get depleted fast and you don't want internet bundles to get depleted on you when you have a task, I mean, the, an urgent task that's being waited elsewhere. You also don't want the let's say you, you are in a Zoom call and you suddenly run out of, of, of internet bundle. So you need a fixed, if possible, unlimited internet connection. You should be able, there shouldn't, shouldn't be restrictions as to how much internet you can use in a certain day. So and, and you also need mobile hotspot because sometimes with remote work, you're not working in a fixed place. Sometimes you take work with you in, on your holiday. So you should be able to use the mobile hotspot to connect to your PC and to finish up on a task, maybe jump on a quick call with your colleagues or manager. Then we have a PC, a desktop PC or a laptop, but I'd advise get a PC because the nature of remote work is, it's mobile. You need a laptop to be able to access these tools to perform the tasks assigned to you and to collaborate with colleagues on projects. So the tools that are needed for remote workers, I'll break them down into categories. So we'll start with team chat tools, the tools you need to chat with your manager, you need to chat with colleagues. So one is WhatsApp. I know you people use WhatsApp to talk with your boyfriends and girlfriends, but it's a very important work tool because you can have a WhatsApp group for your your office, for your department, and that's where important messages are shared. We also have Slack. Slack, one thing I like it is it's separate, it's, it's, it's not unlike WhatsApp that you could, it mixes business with pleasure. Slack is totally for business. You join Slack to collaborate remotely with your colleagues. So you can send messages to other employees, you can share important files, there are channels that can be dedicated for certain issues, like you can have a channel for marketing, where marketing ideas are discussed, marketing issues are raised. And we also have Google Chat, it was formerly called Google Hangouts and it allows, it breaks conversation into rooms similar to channels Slack. So those are the team chat tools that I'm need, are used widely and mostly for remote, by remote workers. Then we have video conferencing tools. So video conferencing tools, the three common ones are Zoom, Google Meet and Microsoft Teams. I believe you have all used these tools. We are on Zoom right now and Zoom is uneasy to, to use video conferencing software. It allows people to share screens, record sessions for future reference, etc. Google Meet, its advantage over Zoom is that Google Meet, it integrates with other Google with other Google applications like Gmail, you can quickly invite someone, you can jump on a quick call just from the calendar, you can add the meeting to a calendar and get notifications when the time for that meeting is, is up. You also, we also have Microsoft Teams and it's similar to this, it allows for sharing meetings and it also allows someone to share the screen and you can record sessions that can be used for reference. Then we have project management tools, which are very important and I'll talk about three important ones. One is Trello. Trello is a powerful project management software that's easy to use. All the work in Trello happens on boards and boards can be divided into lists, which represent different, different stages in a project. Very important because projects have stages, maybe it's just starting out, you're brainstorming ideas. Sometimes you implement it, after that there's evaluation, after that there is post-project analysis. Trello allows you to organize a project and break it down into these different stages. We have Asana. Asana offers its users multiple ways to view projects. There are boards view, which is essentially the same thing as in Trello. But there's also a list view, which lists, lists out each task to be completed for a specific project. So a project, it has sections, sessions and this is what the list does. It tells you, you need to do this, you need to do this. You also need to do this thing, after that do this. Then we have to-do list, to-do list. It allows you to add schedule and priorities and manage the task that you have. So you know what you're working on and who you're working with. So you can add your team and together you can manage and track the tasks that you are working on. We also have collaboration tools, collaboration collaboration tools allow you to collaborate, share information, share files with your colleagues when you're working remotely. One is Google Suite, which I'm sure you're all aware of, it's just the, the entire apps, Google Apps. So this is Google Docs, you can have Google Slides, Google Sheets, you can add members to the, to the files that you're working on and collaborate together on a particular project. Then we have Jumbo, Jumbo is a is a digital whiteboard that lets you collaborate in real time. It's for brainstorming. Same way as when you are in an office setting, in a physical environment, environment, you get a, a whiteboard and a pen. So you, you are, you are coming up with ideas, you're brainstorming, you're cancelling things. Jumbo allows you to do the same thing. Then we have Dropbox. Dropbox is for share, sharing files. If you're working, let's say as a software developer, you need to share large files with safely and securely with other members, you use Dropbox. It allows you to add large files, but the thing is most best means you pay to access, you need to pay to for most best. So there's a limit on how much space you have on the, 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 the plain Dropbox, the free one. But if you need more space, you can pay for that and you can be able to store your files and share them your colleagues safely and securely. So we're going to proceed on, we're going to proceed on dealing with communication breakdown when working remotely. This thing happens when you're working remotely. You are on a project with someone, but all of a sudden you cannot reach them. Where are they? What's happening to them? Sometimes people go offline, sometimes people get sick, they're not able to access their workstation and you, you are on a project together. What happens when that happens? I hope I make sense, I hope it makes sense. There's also sometimes you are not able to understand because talking remotely and talking in person is different. Sometimes you're not able to read the body cues, the movement, the, the intention, the voice, the voice not to. Is this task urgent or it's not, you know, you can, when you're physically present with someone, you can read these things. But remotely through an email or through, sometimes you may not be able to pick some of these things. So communication is one of the most important factors in team effectiveness and one of the most challenging things to get right. Especially when you're working remotely, so communication breakdown can take a significant toll on employee engagement and morale. That's affecting their work performance. So how do you deal with breakdown? How do you deal with breakdown when working remotely? So the first thing is to reach out to your supervisor. If you're not, you're collaborating on a project and you really don't get what someone is trying to say. And you are not able to read the clarification, talk to your supervisor, they know how to handle such a situation. So getting in touch with your manager or supervisor for clarification, seeking clarification allows you to check your understanding. So that you don't misunderstand or misinterpret the meaning or the intention, intention of the message. And therefore, don't take the wrong task or get upset by the wrong reason. It's very important if you're not, and something is not clear at work, reach out to your supervisor, tell them this is what happened and I'm not sure what to. What to make of this, the supervisor will know how to handle that situation. You also need to use other channels of communication if you're not able to reach someone on the primary, on the primary challenge that you're used to. So if you cannot see them on email and you've tried sending several emails to not, to without success. Use WhatsApp, try Slack or to see if they, you can find them there. Sometimes someone is not well and cannot access the work tools or the workstation, but they, on their phone, you can hit them on, on WhatsApp. You also reference the company manual, if something is not clear, most organizations have a manual or handbook that serves as a compass. For the organization's policies and procedures. Use it for clarification in case of a breakdown, very important. Before signing your contract as a remote worker, you will be, you, companies have a manual that they will share with you, an employee manual. Here you, you'll know what to do in certain situations, you know what's expected of you and you can use that in case of breakdown. Okay, so how to leave, the next thing you're going to look at is how, so you are an intern. You've successfully asked the interview and you've been given your internship offer. It's a short-term contract, probably six to one year. But you have to turn this contract to a full term, to a full-time remote contract. How do you go about this? I'll share five key things that will help you, that will help you leave a lasting impression in your organization so that to. To, to motivate them to give you a remote contract, a remote, a full-time remote contract. One is to treat your job as a full-time position. Don't take the job as a temporary one and give it temporary efforts. Treat it as a full-time position and give it your all. So take your internship seriously as you would if you do a full-time job and show your strong work ethic. You make the life that you want and if you want people to. The organization you're working for to observe you full-time, you need to have a strong work, work ethic and treat the internship as you are, as a full-time job. If, let's say, the work that's assigned to you is mi- minimal based because it's a remote work position. You can talk to your manager, ask them to assign you more tasks. This shows that you have initiative and you have a strong work, work ethic. This is how to leave a lasting impression eh impress, impression on your manager to motivate him to give you a full-time job. The next is to go above and beyond, always go on, above and beyond, not just when working remotely and you're looking to secure a remote contract. In everything that you do, go above and beyond. If you show you're the team that you are willing to take on other responsibility, your manager is born to take notice. You want a full-time job, you are a, you are a, you are an intern. You need to show the manager and the company and your colleagues that you can handle more responsibilities. That's how you get promoted, you don't get promoted because you've done what was assigned to you, one, two, three, four. You don't get promoted because you've done the bare minimum, you get promoted because you show the capacity to handle more responsibility. Remember, when you get a full-time position, it means more, more jobs, more, you get more responsibilities. You need to show that I can handle them if I'm, if, if, if I get the chance. So that's how you go above and beyond. The third thing you need to do to leave a lasting impression, to secure a full-term remote contract is to build relationships. Reinforce the value you provide and try to get to know the leaders of, on the inside who make the hiring decisions. Who is your manager? Who do you, the company you're working for, who do you think makes the decision on who to be hired and who will not be hired? Find him, find her, build a relationship with them, let them see you, see the work ethic, let them see what you can bring to the organization. So build relationships and you build relationships by offering value. You offer value through your work that you do, you offer value by being a supporting colleague, you offer value by being collabora- by collaborative, collabor- collaborating. And helping other workers meet and exceed what's expected of them. Another thing that will help you secure a full-time remote contract is to come in with a great attitude. You need to start your internship with a positive attitude, maintain it throughout the program to leave. A lasting impression on your manager. If you're always in a bad mood, if you're always not responsive when someone reaches, reaches out to you. You don't leave the impression that. This organization needs you on a full-time role. So don't make excuses, if something comes up, take it up on the chin and work your ass off. And lastly, you need to explore different areas of the business. You need to show that I can do more than what's expected of me. Remember that organizations, they have many departments, they have many things that needs to be done. So they'll hire you for a specific task, but you need to show them that if push comes to shove and I'm required to. Hold the fort for someone in a certain area, I can do that. So let's say you, you, you've been hired as a, as a software engineer, your work is to, as a software developer, to develop software for the organization that you are working for. But you are, you see that this organization is struggling to maintain and build a positive image on social media. They don't have enough content, they don't have graphics to share, but as a software developer, you obviously, obviously know how to create simple graphics. So you reach, you create some of these things and share them and promote the organization on social media. It, it shows that I'm more valuable than what you, I'm doing and if, given the chance and I'm on a full-time role. I'll provide more value to this organization. So make an effort to learn about the different area of the organization that you're working. This will make your manager know that you are a hard worker, hard worker and will not want to let you go. You just need to give the manager a reason not to let you go and to fight to have you on that organization on a full-time role. So to leave a lasting impression, to secure a full-time role, one, treat it as a full-time position. Two, go above and beyond, work to build relationships with your colleagues and managers. Four, come with a great attitude, always be positive and don't make excuses, do the work that's expected of you. And maintain a positive attitude throughout your time with that company. And also explore, make sure to explore the different areas of the business to prove that you are more valuable than. Ah temporary staff for that organization as, at that moment. So we've reached.
The part of how to avoid burnout when working remotely. So you have this job, it's a remote work, how do you avoid burnout? Burnout will happen, but how do you deal with it? How do you avoid it? Well, remote workers, it, it sparks the ability to switch off after days' work, maybe even more difficult. This is because the space you spend hours working is also the same space that's used, that you use for, to rest and to, for rest and relaxation. You'll be working at home, probably working from the sitting room, this is where you relax when, with your family, this is also the same place where I work. How are you able to make that difference? It's time for work, it's time for, for relaxing, how and, and this is what will help you prevent burnout. So we are going to our third quiz and this time I'm asking you, how do you prevent work burnout as a remote worker? If you worked remotely, what did you do to ensure you don't burn out? To ensure you're not constantly exhausted, how did you manage your time to prevent burnout? Imagine someone is a remote worker, what will you advise them to do to prevent burnout? Please use the chat and share your answers.
How do you prevent burnout as a remote worker? How have you done it? How would you advise someone to, to do to prevent, to do to pre- to prevent burnout? Ruth says proper time management to avoid work spilling over to weekends and off days. When you're working remotely, you need to ensure that you set time for relaxation. This is probably during the weekends, probably during the holidays. So you need to manage your time properly to ensure that the work that you're supposed to do during the week doesn't spill over. To the weekend, so proper time management comes in handy. One, take reminders, set reminders and take breaks, very important, thank you, Ellie, thank you so much, this is a very important thing you can do to. To, to prevent burnout, so take breaks. If you are supposed to, you can only be productive, let's say for one hour straight, work for one hour, take a ten-minute break, do some stretching. And continue the work, don't work consistently because you'll burn out easily. Also set reminders for the work that you are doing. If you are supposed to finish a task as a, at a certain time, set a reminder so that you know I'm supposed to start on this job. At this time and end it by this time, set reminders, thank you so much. Ruth says set goals for each day, very important. When you're working remotely, you need to, you need to set goals for yourself and break this down goal, break down these goals into days. Monday I'm supposed to do this, make sure by time, by the time Monday is close of business on Monday, you've accomplished the goals you did set for yourself. There's scheduling, scheduling, schedule your tab, your time, manage it well. Thank you so much, Ellie. Josiah says time blocking, half-time limits for work, have mandatory rest times, very important. So manage your time and block times for specific things for rest and for work. Thank you so much for those who participated, allow me to continue with the presentation. Okay, so ways to prevent remote work burnout. One is to set a comfortable home office to work remotely, no one said to set a comfortable place to work. I think you're all used to working to, to working in very uncomfortable places, but it's very important. One way to prevent bu- burnout is to ensure that wherever you're, where you're working from, it's comfortable. Okay, so set up an organized and comfortable workspace. This should be ideally in a quiet area of your home, somewhere that allows you to escape the distractions of everyday life and stimulate productivity. And if you are supposed to be working, let's say from the dining area in your home, make sure that at least it's comfortable, the seat is nice. If you are working from your room, don't work from the bed, have an office chair, have a desk in a small space in the room. And close off that room so that no one can come in when you're working and you can continue the work. You also need to create a routine, one way to prevent burnout is by creating a routine. When you have a structure, when you have structure in your day, it becomes easier to manage work and other responsibilities. So set the time that you start work, set the time that you take breaks and time for relaxation and just off days to. Where you'll be doing nothing but relaxing and recovering. You also need to set boundaries, as a remote worker, it's vital that you set boundaries to avoid work from home burnout. This means communicating with your team and your clients about when you're available and when you're not available. When you're working remotely, get in touch with your colleagues and manager and tell them that this is the time, when you create your schedule. Reach out to your colleagues and say this is the time I'll be working, so this is the time when I'll be available. Anytime other than that, you'll not find me, you'll not reach me and probably I'll be resting or relaxing. So set those boundaries if you want to avoid burnout, otherwise you'll find yourself working for the entire day. Then you also need to take breaks to recharge your energy, nothing is more important than your health. I know money is important, but it's not important than your, your health. So when you feel burnout, take a break, take a walk, spend time with your loved ones, play with your baby and just to, to recharge your energy. You also need to get enough sleep, I also didn't see anyone talking about sleep, I think you guys don't value sleep that much, but it's very important if you want to avoid burnout. So make sure you get at least eight hours of good sleep in a day to be able to function correctly. You also need to eat healthy foods. When you are, when you eat nutritious foods, you'll have more energy and focus throughout the day. So make sure you're eating healthy, eat enough veggies, eat fruits, eat proteins. Prioritize your health and make choices that will benefit you in the, in the longer. So that's how to prevent back, burnout, to ensure that you are able to maintain your productivity. And meet your goals as a remote worker. Okay, so yeah, so that's the end of our presentation, thank you so much for listening to me, I hope you've learned something new and I'd advise you to. I'd advise you to sign up for this course on Baobab, it's on, it's a self-care and well, and well-being toolkit, it will help you. It will help you man, learn how to take care of yourself, how to, to, to improve your well-being. So this course is on Baobab, so first register on the platform to be able to access this course and others that are there. I'm sharing the link right now on chat so that you can. You can. Register those who want to learn how to manage their time well, how to take care of themselves when working remotely. So that's the end of our presentation and if you have any question, please use the chat and. Or raise your hands and I'll give you the opportunity to speak. So I've shared a link to the chat, to, to, to the course on chat, so please click on that link. It will ask you to register on the platform and roll on that course on self-care and well-being and it will guide you on how to. Improve yourself, improve your well-being when you're working remotely. If you have any question, please can raise your hand, you can use the chat, it's like you understood everything clearly and you don't have question, which is. It's not a bad thing, but if you have any, please feel free to share. I also want you to, to ask you to be on the lookout for opportunities such as this. You can follow myself, you can follow Gracia on LinkedIn, she'll share these opportunities and. I'd ask you to register on Baobab, it's an amazing platform, there's a lot of opportunities. So Jos- Josiah, please unmute and ask your question, Josiah.
Hi, thank you, thank you so much, sorry, I think I had a challenge with my audio.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, uh, good evening and thank you for that session, it has been very informative. And I think, I, I would not say I am not a victim, but I am, uh, I have gone through remote working for some while.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that at times it can get tough. So I, I wanted to know, uh, a question. Uh, remote working gives one, uh, a platform where you can like work on three or even four jobs. At the same time and you can stretch yourself, uh, further.
Mm-hmm.
So how, how, like, how would you advise someone, especially when they want to balance?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, more than one job, because you know, you also look at the finances.
Yes.
You want to get many streams of income.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I understand you, I understand you, Josiah, and I can say that it's something that I've also dealt with. You want more money, more money means you mean, you take more jobs. But to balance the amount of work that you're doing, you need to first of all, not, don't take, don't take so much work. Don't take, only take them, the work that you can handle, because the work that you have, at the end of the day, it's based on quality. You need to deliver great quality to your clients. So if you take so many jobs, it means you'll be stretching yourself, you'll not be able to pay attention to a certain job and give it great quality. So don't take more than you can handle, don't chew more than you. Yeah, so only consume, only take. So only consume, only take work that you can handle and you need to, from, from, from what you've been doing. You know how much I can handle in a day, you know how many articles I can do in a day, you know how many, how long it will take me to develop an app. Use that to decide how much work will take, how much work you'll ask your manager to assign you. So don't stretch yourself too much, don't stress because your health will give in. You will, you'll feel tired, you'll not be able to concentrate on the work that you have and this will show itself in the quality of the work that you deliver. So, okay, and while I understand the finances issues because you want more jobs, more money. But it reaches a point where even you'll not be able to earn as much. Because the quality will be pu- poor and you may be taking more jobs, delivering poor work and that will affect your pay. So if it's money, the motivator, the motivator is money, then you should always prioritize quality over quantity. Because you want to be in a position to deliver the works that have been assigned to you to the best quality. So just. Examine and understand how much work you can do in a day, in a certain time and don't take more than that. Is that okay, Josiah?
Yes, thank you, thank you so much, Melvin, thank you.
Okay, you can also use the chat if you have a question, okay, if, if there's none, then I want to thank all of you for joining this call today. It's been an honor to give this lecture, to give this lesson and I've learned so much from you guys. And I believe you, you've also, also learned something from the presentation. And I'd like to wish you a nice evening wherever you are. And thank you so much, I think if there's nothing more, then I think we can, we can end the call and you are free to, to leave.